Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. The next item is acceptance of agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll just move it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is approval of minutes from the regular meeting of May 16, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph. Any changes, errors, omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And the special May 15, 2018, meeting, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Move. Is there a second?
I'll second that one.
Seconded by Ralph. Changes, errors, omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item is communications. I have given to the selectmen, and I'll call attention to the public, there will be a public information meeting on Thursday, June 14, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in the library, and it will be on the Route 66 corridor study, which is being sponsored by the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments. There's information on their website, as well as here tonight, and it is to get input from people in terms of the Route 66 traffic operations, access to businesses, pedestrian and bicycle safety. And I'll just pass these to the selectmen. And the second item is, we're tentatively, and we hope the shooter is available, for fireworks to be held July 14, with a rain date of July 15, and a new location, which would be at Portland High School. And the committee and staff are working on this, and I'll be giving more information as it becomes available. If anyone wants to volunteer to help, please contact my office. We'll be happy to have you assist us. It should be a very entertaining night. July 14, rain date 15. Is tentative, and will...
Shooter is a name?
It is. Thank you, Sharon. And the school's okayed the date as well. I checked with them, the superintendent, so it will proceed. Thanks for that information, Sharon. So that is a firm date. Next item, as I had indicated, Sergeant Cunningham would come and give us an update on the situation concerning Rocky. So you have some information for us?
I certainly do. Good evening. Sergeant Scott Cunningham, Portland Police. I was asked to read these three documents received by the town. The first is a JDNO notice. It's a judicial notice, and it reads, "The case is assigned for pre-trial conference on 8/29/18 at 12:00 p.m. Please report to room 308, 20 Franklin Square, New Britain. As to each party represented by counsel, the attorney who will try the case, as well as the attorney having ultimate authority to make a recommendation to the client, if they are different, are required to attend. If a party is an individual, the party must attend. If a party is a corporation or other type of legal entity, a person who has ultimate authority to negotiate a settlement must be present on behalf of the party. Ultimate authority means the ability to meet another party's position without consulting with any other person in his or her entity if persuaded it is in the entity's best interest to do so. Someone with authority to negotiate a settlement only on a pre-established basis does not have ultimate authority. If this is... If this date is inconvenient, please select an alternative dates with all counsel forward slash pro se parties and e-file a motion for continuance with proposed dates at least 72 hours prior to your scheduled pre-trial date. Failure to comply with the terms of this order may result in sanctions, including non-suit or default by order of the Honorable George Levine." Now, this is a... An order that was issued on 5/29/2018 regarding Paul Bell versus the Town of Portland. The second notice is an SCRAM notice, which is a court notice issued on 5/29/2018, Paul Bell versus the Town of Portland. This reads, "Orders entered on this case, number 101.00, filed 5/11/2018. Motion for temporary injunction ex parte. Result, order 5/29/2018, Honorable Sheila Huddleston." And the third order is a JDNO notice, which is a judicial notice issued on 5/29/2018, Paul Bell versus the Town of Portland. This reads, "Order regarding, 5/11/2018, number 101.00, motion for temporary injunction ex parte. The foregoing, having been considered by the court, is hereby ordered. Counsel for all parties appeared at a hearing to determine whether the stay entered on May 14, 2018, should be continued. Counsel for the dependents stipulated that the stay remain in effect, subject to the condition that when the plaintiff visits a dog in the pound, he may walk him only in the confines of the pound. The plaintiff consented to that condition. Pursuant to the party's stipulation, a stay of disposal order shall remain in effect during the presidency of this appeal." And that concludes the reading of all these. I appreciate everyone's time, and have a safe night.
Thank you, Sergeant. Appreciate your information.
I would ask the First Selectmen, sir.
I'm sorry?
These are my... These are copies I received from the First Selectmen.
Oh, can I get copies of that?
We can make...
I haven't received copies of that.
We can make copies available, sure.
Thank you.
The next item is public comment. Yes.
She said I was gonna bring a stool.
While we're preparing for public comment, I'll remind the audience that this is public comment. There's public comment at the end of the meeting as well, and it's not a time where we go back and forth, but it is a time when we listen very carefully, and you are most welcome to comment. So thank you for coming.
Annabelle Marushak, A-N-N-A-B-E-L-L-E-M-A-R-U-S-C-H-O-C-K, 97 Middle 6th Avenue Extension. I'm here tonight to talk about Rocky, a dog that belongs to Portland resident Mr. Bell, but isn't currently living at his home since he's locked up at the Portland Pound. I know that most of you probably know that Rocky has been locked up since 2016, when he bit a person walking in his yard... By his yard. Four months prior to that incident, Rocky was found to be adoptable by Portland Animal Control Officer, and Mr. Bell welcomed Rocky into his home. You may also have read the most recent River East article, which talked about two dog attacks involving two police dogs in the care of one Portland police officer. In both of those incidents, no killer was made for those two dogs, and they were allowed back into service as police dogs. That police officer wasn't sued, as Mr. Bell was. Mr. Bell has paid his price, as has Rocky. The Town of Portland has also paid its price, with its currently $7,000 in legal fees, because the town continues to refuse to release Rocky. At recent Board of Selectmen meetings, many people have gotten up and taken in support of Rocky, and have offered their financial assistance in helping getting a fence put up for Rocky. An animal behavior specialist has offered to work with Rocky. Mr. Bell has offered to put in safety measures in place if there is an agreement to release Rocky. On my change to address petition, we have now over 2,600 signatures. I recently submitted an FOI request to look into how many incidents of dog bites there have been in Portland since 2016, when Rocky was locked up. I have not had a chance to review those reports at the First Selectmen's office, but I urge all of you to take a look at those cases closely. How is Rocky's case so different from the many dogs that have spent only 14 days in quarantine and then were released home? Is there something more to this case? Why is Rocky being so severely punished? People who do much worse are given second chances. Rocky's not a bad dog, just a dog who made a bad choice. The town will not be held liable for anything Rocky may do in the future, so there's no reason for the town to continue to hold Rocky. As to the argument that it's the court's hands and out of the town's hands, the Connecticut Commissioner released a statement regarding a similar incident, and it was determined that the town can indeed negotiate with the owner of the dog, stopping the court case. I am pleading with you to please let Rocky go home where he belongs. Thank you.
Yeah. On this side?
I don't want to break it.
I didn't know I was hired.
Melissa, M-E-L-I-S-S-A, Gerrier Satij, first part G-E-R-R-I-E-R, last part S-A-T-A-G-A-J. And I wanted to come up... One of the reasons I wanted to come up is, next week, on July 11, we have... You had brought up the safety meeting. Is that the same thing as the town meeting to discuss the speeding issue on 66, or is it a different meeting?
There's a meeting on July 11, hosted by myself, not the selectmen, not the full board, and...
Right. That feels loud. I'm sorry.
And the police. And we are going to be talking with our Complete Streets Group, which is an organization, a grassroots group that is concerned with safety in our streets, and speeding is part of that.
Okay. All right. And the second thing, I had a question about, when Officer Cunningham was up here and he was reading through the judicial documentation, it said that there's going to be a meeting on 8/29. Who... And it has to be somebody with ultimate authority, without consulting the town, and it sounds like it's going to negotiation. Who represents the town at that time?
At this point, that is pending litigation. I'm not going to make any further comment on it at this point.
Okay. Would it be safe to assume that it would be the person listed on the judicial site?
At this point, I'm not going to make any further comment, because it is pending litigation.
Okay. And I also wanted to check in, because I know that the town meeting to discuss the speeding and the other things on 66, it was first posted on the Town of Portland Facebook site, and the person was really excited about it, you know, to have that engagement and everything. So I was... And, you know, immediately sent out an invitation on Facebook to get an idea of who's going to be showing up. And I had reached out to the selectmen, because I think it's time to have a meeting a little bit on what you were just saying, how different people... You know, different rules for different folks is the perception from where I sit, from where you sit. So I think it's time to have that meeting. I think that there's a lot of energy and zeal to go after certain folks and hold them accountable, but not others. And that reeks of favoritism. So I think that that really needs to happen, because this isn't a Melissa issue, it's a town issue. And I've reached out to you both, all of you, and I've reached out email and paper copy. So I'm looking forward to hearing something about getting a meeting set up. I think it's only fair and reasonable. Because when I get a notice about my water bill, I was curious, what would happen if I didn't pay my whole water bill? So I didn't. And I got the late fee, which I totally expected, but I also got something that said, "Lean notice," that if I don't pay it by the 11th, which I did, that I would have a lean put on and a $24 charge. So to me, it sounds like there's repercussions, there's an expectation of what I need to do and what will happen if I don't. So somebody paying their water bill has a higher standard than somebody who does violations, zoning violations? So I need help understanding this. So I'm looking forward to when we can all meet. And that's it.
Thank you.
Hey, could I just correct something? Both of you said July 11. We mean June 11, right?
Oh, June 11.
Excuse me. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure, because it's going out now.
No, you're right. June. Could you please wait, Mr. Satij, because I don't know if this lady was next?
No.
I'll leave it up. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Satij.
All right. Thank you, Robert Satij, 111 Collins Hill, Portland, Connecticut, sir. Thank you very much. Yeah, just a follow-up on Melissa's, and, you know, it's... The Kelly situation is ongoing with the driveway behind our property, and we haven't heard anything from Ms. Bransfield, and, you know, she ignores us like she is right now, acting like she's... It goes... We seem like it's going in one ear and out the other. Total... It's going on five years. So what Melissa was talking about, uneven application of town policies and procedures needs to be addressed. This gentleman's... A police officer comes in here today and reads this gentleman, the riot act, about this court case with a dog. Yet Kelly has a violation up there going on for five years, and he's able to do whatever he wants at his discretion, and goes to Florida each year for six months, and probably getting ready to go there again, because we still haven't heard anything from you, Attorney Olson, and I'd like to find out where that stands. Hello? Are you there?
Thank you, Mr. Satij.
You're not welcome. Okay. And we would like to... We haven't had any contact from you, no response on emails. I think there's an issue here with trust, probably some type of... Who knows what other conspicuous things are going on? I would like a status update. Kelly's changed the topography up and around that driveway numerous of times with no accountability. We're short $24 on a water bill, and we're threatened with liens on our house. Yet Kelly runs amok up there, threatening our property, public hazard, and you sit there smugly, like you treat us when we come to talk with you.
Do you have anything else?
Yes. I asked you, what is the status of that, and I'd... Or we have a meeting very quickly about it to find out what that is, and that the other issues be addressed, that he lowered the topography up there, worsening the water situation, diffused it to run to all different sorts of other parts of that property. And this all has to be addressed by engineer, with the other participants in the legal case that was won against Kelly, Melissa Gerrier and Sharon Hoy, and we're in the dark. And you're... We don't know what you're doing. If there's other conversations going on with the person who violated the driveway, the town zoning laws, the policies and procedures, violated the site plan, there's no transparency, therefore, there's no trust, and that goes to further ethic issues, which need to be So I asked you, what is the status of that situation? And I don't consider this back and forth, because these selectmen are completely unaware of this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Satij, for your comments.
No, they're... Everybody... You're pushing this off to the side. Nobody's aware of what's going on up there, except you and Kelly, who you're related to through family.
Thank you, Mr. Satij.
You're not welcome, Mrs. Bransfield.
Thank you, Mr. Satij.
You're not welcome.
Thank you.
I'm not done. You haven't answered me.
This is public comment. You are free to speak.
I'm speaking.
And I appreciate...
So comment... I mean, let me say, it's not an outlandish question. I'm a taxpaying citizen. I'm asking the select woman what the status is of this case is.
Thank you, Mr. Satij. I have no comment to you. I have no comment.
As usual, as typical. You've given me this response for five years. Why is this going on for five years? Why is... You're hammering this guy with his dog.
It is inappropriate at this point...
No, it's not.
...for your questions. This is public comment.
This is the stiff arm you've been given for five years.
I will not tolerate your...
My what?
Your continuing to... You can ask the same question, I'm gonna have the same answer.
And that's what you've been saying for five years? These people need to... It needs to be a matter of public record, how you pushed this off for five years.
This is a legal case. I am not going to comment on it, similar to what I said.
How is it a legal case now? He lost the legal case.
You can continue to speak. I am not going to go back and forth, as I stated earlier before you even came up to the podium.
Well, why did you even say that? Because you knew we were going to come in here and ask about that. Again, pushing...
No, Mr. Satij.
Are you selectmen aware of what's going on up on that driveway by any chance?
There is no back and forth at this time. Thank you.
You're not welcome. Is "thank you" a signal for me to shut up or something? You know? You're trying to shoo me off here, not addressing the situation?
Calm down. Just keep calm, babe.
I'm calm. I'm perfectly calm. But if you were in my house for five years...
There is no back and forth during public comment.
Well, she's in public, I'm in a public. We're commenting.
The selectmen have the right to ask if things should continue or stop.
Well, I just want the selectmen to be aware that this has been going on for six years. The perpetrator's been vacationing in Florida for two and a half years. You've done... And you're treating the situation like you are now that you have been all along.
Could I add something?
Sure.
I noticed tonight, a couple people, Paul, Melissa, thought there was different treatment going on in the town. And you know what? I've heard that from other people. I've personally seen it, and I personally would like to see that on a future agenda. And I think that would be the appropriate time to... I don't necessarily... Susan's right, you can't get into the back and forth on the driveway, you know, that this is public comment, but I do believe if... First of all, you're taxpayers, all of you, and I think when anybody comes into this room with a grievance, we're here as elected officials, we should listen.
Thank you.
I'm listening. I would have no problem asking to put that on a future agenda soon, and I'm sure there's going to be other people that want to come in and comment also, and that's fine, and I think that's what it should be for.
All right.
And I'm okay with that, so...
Well, thank you, Mr. Serb, for letting me realize that it went in one ear and it stayed there and you listened, unlike how this has been going on for five years. That alone should tell you something. Why is this for five years? There's something's...
I want to point out something that is important, and it's not particular to any particular case, but we do have legal concerns with this particular case and others as well, and it is inappropriate to speak of these things in public, and that is why we are allowed, as selectmen and other boards are allowed, to have executive session. When there is pending litigation and there is information that should not be public, is not appropriate, that's why we have the opportunity to have executive session.
Is anybody aware of a lawsuit that's currently pending regarding this?
I will... I can brief the selectmen, and they would be able to...
That's a matter of public information.
There is, in terms of the situation to which you refer. I am not going to get involved, because we are in public session.
Well, we're principals in the matter, because we're the impacted residents, and why aren't we apprised of this?
This is a public meeting, Mr. Satij. I'll repeat myself. I will not be going back and forth where there is a legal matter in concern, and that's all I have to say.
Right. Well, thank you for that, but mostly thank you...
You're welcome.
Not from you, from Mr. Serb, for...
Oh, excuse me.
Listening to my concern here. It's very... It's good to know that some of the governance of this town are actually listening.
And there are concerns that are shared during executive session, when they involve legal matters.
Well, there goes a lack of transparency. We're impacted on this property. But while I'm up here, I'd like to congratulate the Town of Portland and the selectmen on the airline trail. That's a fantastic-looking development, and I'm looking forward to using. That's really nicely done. Congratulations on it.
Thank you, Mr. Satij. I think there was another lady on this side. Is there any other comments?
I'd like to make a comment, but I came in late, and I apologize for that. I just want to know, so...
Name for the record, please.
Caroline Biaresley, 7 Jordan Lane, Portland, Connecticut. Do you want me to stand?
I'm not charged.
It's up to you.
Okay. Well, no, I can't say anything to... I know what has transpired from... What was that, Officer Cunningham?
Yes.
So what's the story? I mean, what is... Just briefly, don't go into it. What...
I will read what Mr...
Not the whole thing of the legal jargon, just...
It sounds like there's a mediation...
We don't go back and forth during public comment. I'm trying to be consistent.
Will you please put it in layman's terms briefly?
There was a motion for temporary injunction, which was heard, and the case was assigned for a pre-trial conference on August 29, 2018, at 12:00 p.m., and that would be in New Britain. And each party should be represented by counsel, the attorney who will try the case, as well as the attorney having authority to make a recommendation to the client. And at that time, if it is not appropriate or inconvenient, another date could be made. And in addition, there was an order regarding the motion for the temporary injunction, and the counsel for all parties appeared at a hearing to determine whether the stay entered on May 14 should be continued.
Which stay was that? The stay that they couldn't walk him?
No.
That's what I mean...
No.
That's why I was hoping Paul could do it briefly, because you're going right over my head.
The stay for no disposal, to be... No disposal order.
Disposal meaning kill the dog?
They're not going to...
That's correct.
Right.
That's correct.
Oh, so they decided they're not going to kill the dog, correct?
And at this...
At this time.
Stipulated that that remain in effect, subject to a condition that when the plaintiff, which is Mr. Bell, visits the dog in the pound, he may walk him only within the confines of the pound.
Okay.
The plaintiff, which is Mr. Bell, consented to that condition, and this situation or the stay remains in effect during the appeal.
Okay. So Rocky is not going to be killed, but you've made no decision on whether you can release him, whether it's to Paul or rescue place or anything?
There's a meeting, Caroline, on the 29th of August.
Okay. So, well, we have to wait. That's a long way away. But anyway, first of all, I'm not familiar with politics at all. What... And maybe you can explain this, or give me something to read. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of you, and only one is allowed to speak? This is the first time I've heard any of you talk, is Mr. Serb today. Surely, of the seven of you, you almost have opinions on every subject, whether it's that man's or that. We'd like to hear from you also. We're just hearing from Mrs. Selectwoman Bransfield, and none of us are happy with the answers. And so because of that, we're judging you also by you being quiet. You know, we don't know you. But I think as... But I think as, as town folks, when we come to the meeting, we're giving our time. And I do really, I don't wanna be up here twice a month on a Wednesday, visiting you, when I could be home gardening. But I just feel like with what's Paul happened, the dog, it's just about the dog for me. With this lady, now I'm getting interested in that, should I keep coming back to find it? But I don't know the story, I don't know who's right, who's wrong. How do we find that out? But I don't like people hiding behind legal lawyers. Lawyers destroyed us, Atlas shrugged. Is that, don't we care about each other anymore? I mean, can't you find the compassion to give us the answers? And as far as the policeman that was here, Cunningham, Sergeant, private, whatever. I have to tell you, I didn't get this old without knowing what life was about. And I know that whether it's Sergeant Cunningham, or Chief of Police Malardo, or ACO Karen, that's their livelihood. A chain of command is there, and they're being told what to say and what to do. So I can't help but keep coming back to you, Selectwoman Bransfield. And you're not giving me any answers, and I'm really, really frustrated. So I guess the next thing, I know, we were thinking of doing, is approaching each one of you selectmen, 'cause you should have equal voice, or no, or don't you? You don't have equal voice?
Majority rules, yes.
Oh, so you all vote?
Yes.
We, you know, we wanna know about each of you. Election's coming next year, I wish it was coming this year, because I would, I'd find out about each of you and do what we have to do, including you. I have nothing against you, Susan, other than it's just totally you, you, you. And it just doesn't work for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, so could I just say something? You know, first of all, with the driveway, I have no details. So I am certainly not gonna make comments about something that's ongoing, so... It's not been one of the items that we've had, that we've been discussing. Okay, so again, we're not, we're gonna try to get into back and forth. I'm just making a comment that we don't have information. It's not to say that we won't get additional information, then we can make our own judgment. But ultimately, I'm not gonna sit out here and make a comment about something I don't know anything about. And then the story with the dog is the same kinda situation. It's a currently, it's a, it's a live case, and obviously, there's lawyers involved. I am not, having not reviewed all of the details, gonna start making comments. And I gotta think that that's pretty much the feelings, the generally, in our, in our board right now. So, believe me, I've listened to everything that's been said. I'm not losing sight of that, and I have read additional information, and maybe some of the others here have. But while we're in the middle of this, I don't plan to make any comments unless it's not a crim, a crim, sorry, a case, a case or I have additional information. So that's my put on that. I, I have, I've gotten some additional information.
Yeah, I just wanna add one thing real quick. I know this topic has been something that a number of people have been involved in in town. I've had a number of conversations with folks on both sides of this, just privately, where people have asked. And, and I've told everyone the same thing, I mean, I'm trying to listen to everything that's been said about it, read as much as I can about the details. Some information's been brought to us new that I wasn't aware of, in terms of the last meeting with the police dogs and everything. So it's an evolving kinda thing. I'm trying to be as open-minded about it as possible. I have a dog at home, I have, you know, a lot of friends that are pet lovers, as am I. So it becomes an emotional issue. And we up here have to make decisions based on what we think is the best interest all the way around. And, but I think I speak for everyone, we're listening to everything, and we're paying attention. So while it may seem like we're not saying much up here, we're hearing every word that you guys say, we really are. And, you know, we're in the community, we're volunteers up here as well, but we get how, how passionate folks are. And I gotta tell you too, I know it's been said last time as well, the fact that the young girls are coming up here and taking this cause up, I think is wonderful. Gets them involved in a meeting on a Wednesday night, when they could be doing homework, but they're here talking about this. And I think that's wonderful. See, because, because they're... There you go. So we think that's wonderful, it really is, and it's, and it's appreciated that the young folks in town are taking up the topic and issue, and really presenting themselves so, so well here. So, but we are very well aware of that. I mean, the discussion for this kind of topic goes on, not only here, but also with the folks that we know in town, so. So we hear, we hear all of you, we really do.
Yes, if you like, you'll be heard better, that's why Caroline, we asked you.
The thousands of people watching now will hear you now.
Just what I wanted to do at my age is be here in Portland. I just moved back a year and a half ago when my dad passed away. So I'm now a Portland resident again. Susan, I mean, Selectwoman Bransfield. When I first called you, before I even came to one of these meetings, and we, we talked, I thought we had a nice talk too. You surprised me that you and Karen were gonna start educational programs about dog safety. Has that been implemented or began?
She did have, Karen did host a table with information at the townwide tag sale. And she and I are working on some additional work, hopefully in the summertime. So yes, we are working on that, and she's started already.
Is there a site that Portland has that can update us so we can know? I would have liked to go on myself to support it.
There are some materials that Karen shared with me that are at the town hall, they're outside my office, some written materials. I'm not certain, Caroline, 'cause I haven't looked at her webpage, whether there's anything electronically. But she did have some materials that she had at the townwide tag sale, that she made available at town hall as well. And as she plans other educational sessions, we'll do our best to publicize them, so people can attend, and then have written materials available too.
Okay, great. You know, I wanna see some positive solutions.
Yes, I agree.
I like each one of you, believe me.
Thank you very much.
The only other thing I would add, I think it's great that you all show up, and we do learn things. For example, at any point during this process, there can be negotiations. And I think that's a good thing you brought up, and I think Susan brought up executive session and things like that'll happen. So you're not, just because people aren't responding, I think, we're learning too, all the details. But I do think it's important that you guys come up, and we are here, and you're never gonna get brushed off, but please, come. And we'll figure out a way to put things on agendas, talk things out, because there, obviously, that's how we get things done in this town. And I'll always advocate for that. So please, come forward, state your concern, your problems, and we'll, we're gonna get through it.
Shirley Olson, 14 Russell Avenue, excuse me. This is gonna be a little bit different, but it's related to Rocky. On Save Rocky, S.R. writes, "I support Annabelle and believe in her and this cause." Exclamation point, Rocky needs to be saved. Thank you, Annabelle, and your team, your sister Cassidy, and your friend Amelia." I wanna say, "Amelia," because Amelia Earhart, we won't cover her. On Friday, April 20th, North Wyndham's Rosemary Maguire, Maguire's River East letter to the editor, "Dog on death row," appeared. Her letter reiterated the same must measures as Rocky's young advocates have. A leash, training, offense, and send him home. Isn't it ironic? Save Rocky has more than met its initial goal on its petition, which is 4.6 times greater than the votes cast for the town's May 14 budget agenda. Mr. Bell had Rocky four months before the unfortunate incident occurred. Further, on more than one occasion, Mr. Bell has said he will make all necessary changes to bring Rocky home. His insurance company settled the incident's claim with $275,000, not the 125. My guess is maybe the other is lawyer fees. On my two tenths of a mile street, there are 19 homes, eight children, all but two are school age, and 14 dogs. Oh, by the way, I didn't count the coyotes. Hey, I went to a thing last week, they said that's the precursor of the dogs are the coyotes. My four-legged being is a cat, not a dog. Some people say that dogs are smarter than cats, and cats are smarter than the dogs. Regardless, all are loved very much by their owners and become family members. On Señorita's first night at home at age seven weeks, she claimed the nightstand as her bed. In the fall, she moved into what is now our bed. And she moves out in late spring. She spent much time watching neighborhood going on, goings on, and still watches. She now only growls when someone new, a strange vehicle, or an unknown four-legged being comes around. The routine didn't change. She did growl the day that the brush was picked up. And Ben, it was payloaders they use, right, the yellow ones? And she growled. And she stopped growling when one of the fellows jumped off the truck, because obviously, she recognized him. She too knows if something is different or wrong. She learned when the father next door left for work. When he got a new truck, she knew something was different. It took her but a short time to figure out it was okay. The routine didn't change, only the sound of the truck. Señorita sits in the window and watches the fire department EMT mow his lawn, clear snow from his driveway, walk his dog, and drive by in his truck. At night, however, she would become very upset when he went out on call and the blue strobe light was on. That one, she just couldn't figure out. Eventually, I spoke with him and explained what was happening. I asked if he would turn the light off or on after he passed the house, problem ended. She did the same with Santa's fire truck, but Santa only comes once a year. I was out in the yard with the little girl next door, mowing on the school field behind us started. Señorita became, began pulling on her leash. The little girl said she wants to go in. That's what we had taught her, that pulling on the leash meant, and she abided by that rule. She felt hurt, but it wasn't her, it was the noise. I explained, or we talked about, that the mower sounds a lot louder when we're outside than when we're inside. On another time, we were outside, an ambulance siren was coming up Main Street. Again, the same little girl, she wants to go in. I said, "Let's wait and see." The siren passed, Señorita went over to her and indicated, "Brush me now." Rocky has been with his owner Paul for only four months. No way could Rocky have learned everything he needed to know in such a short period of time. Certain activities happen in certain months. You don't mow the grass in December, and you don't plow snow in September. Further, other events are random, different people show up at different times. On Save Rocky, C.H. writes, "There is a dog on my street who has bitten three people. His punishment, 12-day quarantine in his home. Why is Rocky's punishment harsher? It isn't fair." Exclamation point. Same town, exclamation point, different breeds, exclamation point. What is happening to Rocky is unacceptable." Exclamation point, exclamation point, exclamation point. Rocky must go home with Paul. Paul has the certificates for Rocky's new going-home collar, harness, and leash, and a commitment from the trainer, behaviorist, who evaluated him to be non-aggressive, and he wants to please, to continue working with them, and plans are in place for offense. I really don't understand this, because there was no witness that was not involved in the event. How does anybody know that Rocky wasn't provoked? Thank you.
Anything else?
Hello, Paul Bell, 187 Waldmarva Turnpike, Portland, Connecticut. We have a full house here of selectmen, and normally, we've had a larger audience on the other side. And it's a shame that a lot of people didn't get to see Sergeant Cunningham here. I also am not aware, or haven't been advised, on the August 29th pre-trial conference, which, at this point, it's, it's good to hear, but it's, it'd be nice if we could sit for mediation and come up with a plan. And I'll show you what I have planned for offense, that I will have him leashed and muzzled. All those things could be discussed via mediation, excluding the, the trial. The, it was, they were trying to tell the select people, persons, that you could mediate at any time during this whole process, as far as, outside of the, the legal matters. So with the pre-trial conference, August 29th, there's all this time that's gonna go by after that. And in that pre-trial conference and everything involved with that, is, is also more legal expenses for the town of Portland. So what I propose, and I'm, I'm asking if any of you would like to do this. I'm inviting you to come to my house next Wednesday, 7, 7:30, whatever would be most equitable, but I figure that's the way the meetings are run. Come to my house, 7 o'clock, and I'll show you and explain to you the exact plans that I have for the dog, what I propose to do. And also, I would encourage you, if you would like, to meet me down at the pound, any, any day. I go every day from usually 3:30 to 4:30. So you yourself can see the dog that everybody is discussing, and you will see for yourself why I'm fighting for this dog's life. And I would encourage you to come down. You can't meet him directly, but you could see from the other side of the fence, his behavior, how he interacts with me, everything. And I would encourage you to do that, and you can reach out to me. My number is 860-338-0922. And I would encourage you to call, and we could set something up, and I would have no problem doing that. I think there's a lot of, I wasn't aware that, there was a lot of information that you're not aware of, but we can sit and talk. We can sit and meet together and mediate previous to the pre-trial conference, which I believe would expedite things. previous to the pre-trial conference, which I believe would expedite things and also save the town some more money as far as legal fees. Because I have to tell you, I will not give up ever on the dog. I won't give up. He could be in there 10 years, 12 years. I'll be coming here for the next, every meeting for the next 12 years. So I will not give up. I've been doing this already for two and a half, so, and I've gone there every day. You can ask Karen. I've gone there every day. There's times I can't go because I have surgery, or any of the other things that have, have come about, but I've gone there every day. Sometimes I go twice a day. So if you don't think I have the resolve to continue with this fight, I don't know what else to tell you, but I won't give up. I appreciate your time. Thank you for listening. I hope you reach out and call me, and thank you very much.
I want to recommend to the selectmen to go down and visit Rocky from the fence side. You can't go inside the pound, but you can see him. You can see, everybody can see, okay? I have all my fingers, I have my thumb. I did meet Rocky on Saturday. He's very energetic. He did everything that Paul asked him to do. He came over, and I was able to scratch a little bit of his nose, because he could put it through the chain link fence, and he lifted his head, and he licked my fingers like the kitty does. So I got a doggie kiss. But no, please, if you have the opportunity, go down and meet Rocky. There is something not right with this situation, and this is coming from a cat person. Thank you.
Kim Nagy, Maruchak, 97 Middlesex Avenue Extension. I'm a terrible public speaker. I've really tried to not be in the limelight and just be the support behind the scenes, so I have no prepared words, and I'm sure I'll be all over the place, so I apologize. But as Mr. Bell stated how he has resolve, I think I'm a pretty stubborn Hungarian, and let me tell you, she puts me to shame. So I'm here to support her, and I think we're going to continue to be here, and as people have said, you know, we do have better things to do with our time, but Rocky is that important. A lot of things have happened recently in my life that I keep going, what are all these signs trying to tell me? Within the past couple of weeks, my son went up to visit a neighbor who has a dog, who he's interacted with before. He went up to pet the dog, and the dog bit him on the finger. First thing he came home, and it was gushing pretty badly, and I said, "Let me look at that, it might need stitches." Mom, please don't take me to a doctor, because I don't want them to do what they've done to Rocky. So please just don't, Mom, it'll be fine, it'll heal up fine. So that was one incident. Walking our dog at 5:30 in the morning, out of nowhere, a pit bull showed up just right next to us, and I know they don't live at that house, and that dog attacked my dog. We had to intervene. There were some scratches, some bumps, all of that. We went about our business after meeting up with the owner, and the owner apologized and all of that. My brother-in-law had his dog attacked recently, and they had to take it to the vet. He sustained injuries. My case about, or my point about all of those cases is, I know that dogs can have their moments. Rocky had his moment. People have their moments. I've had people in my life personally that have made poor choices and have done their time, have, you know, made amends, and go about their life. So the fact that this continues to go on with a dog that did something one time that we're now going to label him, you know, if we did the same thing with people, we'd either have a really bad situation in jails, because we'd have a bigger problem than we do now, or we'd reduce our population by a lot if we just gave kill orders for people. So I think we really need to take a hard look at what we're doing, what's been happening. Annabelle talked about that Freedom of Information request, which I did email about on her behalf, and we haven't made it over to the Selectwoman's office, because I really am curious to see how many dogs have come and gone since this happened with Rocky. How severe were those bites, and what happened in all those incidents? They're not sitting down in the pound with Rocky, and there's no appeal process. So were kill orders issued, and the people just agreed to the kill order? Or have there not been kill orders? I think it's important that we look at having standards and accountability. I'm a special ed teacher. I've got to follow the same standards with all of my kids. You know, we have to be held accountable for all kids regardless, and I think the same should be true in all of these situations that we really need to have in place. And I know that's the bigger picture with state laws and everything on what animal control officers need for training and all of that, that I think it needs to be more standardized and not just decisions made on feelings, on gut instincts. So I guess that would be my points today. Thank you. I'm sorry. One last thing. I do have a letter. It's dated from 2014 that I meant to print off to share, that is from the Attorney, Office of the Attorney General, that speaks to the point of when there is a case, and this is exact same thing, 2014. It went to a pre-trial, and it did talk about, right here it is stated by the Office of the Attorney General, that the town and the parties have the ability to go to the court and say, "We want to reach an agreement," out of court. So it is in writing right here, and I can get you a copy.
From the Attorney General?
Yes.
Could you definitely, could you get a copy of that to Susan's office, if she could distribute that to everybody, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I really don't know all the sides of it, but if what I'm hearing is true, you don't want us here each week. So, you know, something happened.
I kind of like you.
Something happened two years ago, and this poor dog, I mean, can we let all our egos go? I mean, I make mistakes. Sometimes I have to eat humble pie. Save the town money, put it on our streets, or new signs for speeding and that, but please, if you can do this before the pre-trial, do it. Be humble and do it. You're going to like yourself a lot when you're older and you think about your past. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Paul Glenn. I live at 385 Main Street. One of the things that came to my attention this week is that there are probably more than the two, but I've become aware of two other dogs in the state that are in the pound. Simon down in Guilford has been locked up for one year roughly, and he had his pre-trial hearing last Friday after one year. There's another dog in Waterbury, and I don't know the dog's name, but that dog has been on death row for four years, and they don't even have a hearing scheduled. So this can go on as long as it takes. Like Paul, I'm going to be here at every meeting until we get a resolution on this. And now that I've said that, I have one other unrelated issue that I'd like to bring up, and that is that I went to the town website to get copies of the minutes of the last three meetings and to try to keep up with the oncoming agendas, and your website doesn't work, and that needs to be fixed. When you go into the menu for minutes and agendas, all you get is a schedule. That's useless. I know what the schedule is. It's the first and third Fri, Wednesday of every month. So whatever that issue is, that needs to be repaired in the interest of disclosure.
I will look at, Mr. Glenn, I have used that, used the website, not this week, but I have not had that same experience, so I will.
As I said, when you go for the meetings and the agenda, all you get is a schedule, and that's worthless. Well, I went to it yesterday. I meant to actually bring it up, or send an email to someone, but I went to it yesterday to try to get a schedule of a meeting, or get an agenda. I think I was trying to get an agenda for one of the meetings yesterday. I think I was bored of it. Well, I started down, but I, the website, and I got a 404 error, so it wasn't even working last night. I didn't, I didn't check it today, but that's what I got yesterday.
I'll speak with Dave about that. Dave is our IT coordinator.
Okay, because in addition, in addition to looking out for Rocky, that's something else I'm going to be looking out for, and I'm going to, I think all the taxpayers have a right to expect that to be working.
I know that it does work, and I'm hearing that on occasion it fails, so.
Well, it's not like I'm doing anything that's difficult. It's a simple Google search, and if you can't get that information through Google, that's, that's pretty lame.
Thank you.
Oh, and I vote.
Thank you. Are we ready to go on to number seven?
Can I just say something?
Yes.
To the people that kind of said we sit up here stone-faced, I know for myself, and I think all my colleagues were listening, you can see every week I take copious notes, but to me, public comment is, that's what we're supposed to, be sitting here listening to you comment, and then when it comes on the agenda and we have to vote or have further discussion, that's when we'll do it. So I don't want you to think that we're not listening, or I'm not listening. I'm listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one, one.
Yes, sir.
This issue with the website has been going on for two weeks.
Thank you.
Just one other thing, Sue?
Yes, Paul?
How am I going to get the copies of the?
I was going to give them to you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Can you, my, your IT personnel, even though you couldn't get on the site for a while, I check the page every couple days, if you can get on the Cessar's database to find everything that you're doing. So one site was for a big, a long time.
Maybe it was the calendar. Mr. Kuzminski often comes into our meetings, because he assists with the taping of the meetings, so if he's able to come in tonight, I will tell him right now, right when he comes in, but short of that, it'll be two. Thank you.
I sent you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
If you scroll all the way to the bottom, there's a time.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
If you, when you go to the landing page of the PortlandCT.org.
Right.
Scroll down.
Yep.
And you'll see Contact Us, and when you go in, they click on Contact Us. You'll find it, remember, if you go over to the left-hand corner, there's two gentlemen's names.
Yes.
And I sent them, I have not yet heard anything yet, but you can.
Thank you.
Some stuff is up, but it is returning 404s, which means.
Okay, numbers, yes.
I was going to say, I've just gone to the website, and if you go to the meeting that you're looking for, at least in this case, it's for a subcommittee meeting that's for Water and Sewer, and I'm able to open up the meeting in the accordion and see both the agenda and the minutes. I went to another meeting that was more recent, and in that case, I know the minutes have not been submitted yet, and the minutes weren't posted. So at least in this case, I was able to get to them. So there is a mechanism, but you have to go in through accordion, so we can have Mr. Kuzminski check it. But I know right now, I was able to pull, at least for this one meeting, that I knew that they were completed, I was able to get to him.
Up until yesterday, I'm currently doing it on cell phone.
Yeah, that's what I just did, sir. That's, yeah.
Yesterday, I am now armed with two state-of-the-art computers.
Yeah, it's not, it's, there's not a straight, you look for the, when you go into the agenda, I went to the accordion, and then it, with the, then going by the list of all the meetings, and then I looked at the specific meeting itself, and when I opened up that meeting, that's when I was able to get the attachments. So it may be too high looking at it, but we can have, like I said, we can have Mr. Kuzminski look at it, but at least in this particular case, I was able to get to him.
Thank you, Jim. The next item is the 2018 Neighborhood Assistance Act program. We have one application for this program, and we had a public hearing tonight at 7:00. There were no comments on the application, so I would entertain a motion for approval of the Community Renewal Team Incorporated's application for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
It's a good program. Glad to see people engaging in it.
Annabelle. All in favor? Good night.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
I will.
Motion carries. The next item is a resolution, fourth quarter transfers, Board of Education Maintenance, and that is in your packet, and I know that we have David Murphy here, as well as Jim, who are the liaisons to the two boards, so did you want to just say a brief statement about it, David?
We just approved the transfer up to the no more than $75,000 to the Board of Education Maintenance Fund, Fund 11, and we also did transfer up to the no more than $60,000 School Lunch Fund, Fund 5.
Which is the next resolution. Jim, did you have anything?
Yeah, I was not able to attend last night, because I was at a competing meeting, but from my time on the board, this is, you know, just a standard, standard practice for them to get money where it needs to be.
What's the lunch fund deficit from, I'm sure?
We're still on eight, Ben, so we'll move on to school lunch in a minute, but I think the.
They brought it up.
We're on, we're on Board of Ed Maintenance.
Yeah, they brought up both during the conversation. I'm with you.
Okay. We will cover that in nine. Do you have any questions on the Board of Ed Maintenance?
Sounds good.
So is this kind of routine? This is like part of their budget, part of the plan?
Yeah.
If there's extras.
Yeah, if there's some extra money in one fund, you can move it. Oh. To get it where you would need it to be in another fund to do work you need to do.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the fourth quarter transfer, you know, the resolution to allow the fourth quarter transfer for the maintenance fund for no more than the $75,000 to the Board of Education Maintenance Fund 11, from the available fiscal year 2018, Board of Education Appropriations, as they approved last night.
Seconded.
Discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. The next item is the School Lunch Fund. Ben, did you have a question on that?
Sure, back, back to Dave. The 60, did you guys have any information why it runs into? Okay. Is the lunch fund supposed to be self-sufficient? Is this from?
Not self-sufficient. However, the act of, the government, the state, the reactive voting increase for lunch money, a nickel will clear the max, it will go up every year, so.
Do we know what the whole fund is for that department, what they need to operate? I'm just curious, like, is it 240,000 we're talking? We need 60, so this thing's running at 75%? And, you know, I'm just, I'm kind of curious. Susan, do you know anything about this?
I am not familiar. That's why we have our liaisons here.
Good answer, Susan.
That was a real smooth answer.
Pressure's on you now, bud.
As previously stated, I was not at the meeting last night, so I cannot tell you what the current, but I can tell you that I believe we had to do the same thing last year. This is not atypical for this time of year for the transfers.
I believe you budgeted this.
So this is basically Board of Education money, just shifting from one account to another.
Yes.
Within the Board of Education.
Yes.
Correct, and they have discretion to spend their money as they, as they want to, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
How this thing's set up, and, you know, I'm going to vote in favor, because I believe it's needed, but I would like, if we could, at the next meeting, to at least get a little more information on this, this topic, so, just so I.
Bring it, Dave, that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
It is something we go over and discuss every year, and it is, the selectmen by the charter have to move money among funds, even though it is budgeted, it is an action that this board takes at the record. action that this board takes at the recommendation of the Board of Education.
I, I just have one question, that is, uh, if in fact there's a 60 or 70,000 dollar need every year, what is the Board of Education doing to remedy that? Is there a remedy?
Absolutely. When we do the budget timing, we look at the scope, if we're seeing something trending up or trending down, we definitely adjust the budget, so, and we'll just cover it in the unexpected years. With the up to, that, that, that month was transferred over the meeting, a fraction of that. I could get some more information, but I can't, I don't have the resources to know.
Sure, that'd be helpful. Thank you. Is there-
I can, I'll make a motion, yeah, to give the, um, just to, you know, keep this moving, um, I'm gonna make, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, recommendation of the Board of Education, um, that we transfer, allow them to transfer up to but no more than 60,000 dollars to the School Lunch Fund, Fund 5, from the available fiscal year 2018 Board of Education appropriations.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just that I'd like, like to, you know, get a little more information for the next meeting, just so we all have it. What, what the original budget was, why we're running in the deficit, things like that, you know, just-
Yeah, and what I'll try to do is, the next, um, Board of Ed meeting that I'm at, if this comes up, or if there's a discussion on this, that can be a question, I can try to bring that back to, and apologies, I couldn't get there last night, it was just too many meetings, too little time.
But keep up the good work on the Board of Ed side.
Are you ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. The next item is action on Amendment Number Six to the Agreement for Engineering Services Buy-in Between Town Portland, Connecticut, and Western and Samson Engineers. We have discussed this previously, and, um, it is back on your agenda, and I will give you a brief update on the Route 17 project. Last time we met, um, the, let's see, the contract with Dorita Construction has been signed along with the alternate number one, which is the entrance off of Strickland Street and Route 17, that intersection, and I also signed a change order for a reduction for the bottom line of 411,000 dollars and change, um, which means a reduction in the amount of expenditures, and the committee, oh, look who's here, David. Well, in a minute, we're gonna have something for you in the minute, in the middle of an agenda item, but when we finish it, I did wanna let you know about something in the website. Um, so, the, um, change order reduces the amount, leaving sufficient approximately, somewhere in the order of approximately 5 percent contingency for the project, and it allows for sufficient funds for Amendment Number Six as well, given the budget associated with the project. So, I'll open it up for discussion. Jim, did you have anything to add to that?
Um, yeah, I mean, just the, the fact of the, the change order one, took a look at some areas where we could, uh, make some reductions. They're items that we had, you know, talked a little bit about previously, that keep all the funk, function of the park intact, um, you know, certain, certain minor, you know, certain changes, really just to try and drive some of the costs down and give us some flexibility, and the key was to make sure we preserved enough contingency, so that if some things, um, unexpected come up, we can manage those within the $6 million budget, and obviously, if, if they, if we, everything goes smoothly as we would anticipate, um, we can bring back some of those elements that were, um, optioned out as part of the change order. So, uh, we have enough room in the budget at this point, uh, with that, to keep the, the contingency that was discussed, and, um, this, this amendment gives us the, um, the construction oversight and the contract administration. Um, it's a pretty complicated, when you start looking at all the subs and the amount of work that's required and the coordination, it's a pretty complicated project, so it's, it's gonna be good to have the oversight and have some of the onsite representation that this would give us, so.
Like I brought up in the last meeting, it still says estimate of 93,000 on the resident, and I, I believe I, resident representative, I believe I had two questions that meeting. One was, why does it say estimate? That's my first question. Number two, what was their original budget in their proposal when they created the number? What did they put in there? In other words, they came up with a, a guess on this entire project, what-
I think they had a standard percentage voting that was in, um-
Was it 93,000?
But, I, I mean, it's, it's actually hard to say, 'cause I think it would've been more the construction and then different oversight. I actually don't have that with me, I don't have that number right now.
You mentioned that, and I totally spaced the-
The budget also changed, right? The original budget was a different level than this budget is. So, the focus of the committee has been, we have $6 million, and we're making everything fit and work within that framework, 'cause that's what ultimately was allocated and what the tax, taxpayers, the residents of Portland voted, um, voted to, um, go forward with. So, the key is, is that what's in here now actually does meet that and keeps us within those, those budget constraints.
And that's awesome, and I wanna thank you guys for all the time you put in on this, and, and, you know, everybody else that's not here, uh, but I, I can't vote on something that says estimate. I can't.
I think, I think the estimate is because there's an hourly charge, and then there's an estimated number of hours, and so the number could be-
Well, then I'll vote up to 93,000, and then we discuss it after that. I don't know how you wanna do it, but they created the budget, they knew what this project was. Give me a number. You know, it, I've seen estimates that get blown out of the water. We don't need, that's an open, open door for things to get out of control, and I, I don't like that personally. I don't know where everybody else feels, but, I mean, you're, you're a resident representative over the project, pick a number. They created the budget. I wanna know what they created for a number. If the number was 100 grand, it's 100 grand. If it was 80 grand, it's 80 grand. Somebody at some point knew that number.
To answer your question, we have not exceeded any of the amendments, um, without coming back with another amendment.
They're not, they're not gonna go over that number without coming for, with some explanation.
It's gonna be less.
I wanna, I wanna strike the word estimate, and if we have to re-talk about something later, that's fine, but up to, or however you wanna phrase it, that's an open door for, for a lot. I mean, it, right, somewhere in here, it then gives you the hourly rates of 90 and 105, so, I mean, obviously, it could add up quick, and I think at the end of the day, is everybody, you know, Jim, you just talked about the scope of the project, but I think everybody's fully aware of the scope of the project. I believe this is the first time these people have done this. I think we hired a competent firm, we're going to be hiring a competent firm, so I believe that can be a firm number, just like everybody else. I don't think this is a guessing game at this point, I think. Uh, so, I don't know why the resident representative is a shot-in-the-dark number. I think it should be a hard-
The bottom line is not an estimate. The total lump sum fee is listed there, so that is not an estimate, and that is not what we can exceed.
But if we enter into this agreement, not only does it say 93,000 quote-unquote estimate, it then talks about the fees that would then be associated with going over that quote-unquote estimate. So, we, I know you have a total of 293, but it's open-ended if we leave the word estimate, and on top of it, you then leave the $105 per hour for a senior representative and $90 per hour for a regular representative. We can pick a hard number, it's our contract, I believe. Um, if we don't, we could be getting the town in, uh, trouble.
The additional fee, as it says in the front, that Ben just said, the additional fee for these additional services is 239,500, which will be added to Tasks 9.9, excuse me, 2.9 and 2.10.
Where are you reading that?
This left page.
Oh, okay, but that number is based on one number in quotations, estimate, estimated, sorry, I'll use the full word.
I think what I will say with regards to that is, I remember, we at length talked with them about these services, and I think, um, they have a certain expectation of what they believe, how many hours they will spend weekly with regards to the project, based on the length that they have said it would be, and I think, um, their use of estimate is probably because they, they expect a certain level of hours, and we pushed hard, and there was discussions about whether we would suggest less hours, and so I think they put estimate because, because they were going off, they originally were going off of what they would, believe they would be looking at. I mean, we did talk about less hours, but we landed at that number, and we, we pushed them hard on this. I, I gotta think that that's the number they feel comfortable with, but, you know, I, we, the estimate word, I understand what you're saying.
Could we tell, say, not to exceed?
No more of that, yeah.
Instead of estimated? You know, if they wanna, if they're comfortable with that number, but just-
That, it's our contract, I believe, yes, we would have that right. And we, we're leaving it open-ended, and that's my issue. I think, first of all, kudos to everybody that got us under the budget. I think everybody's been doing a great job. This isn't, I'm not going to war here over any issue other than the word, I'm not gonna enter the, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote in favor of entering into a contract that is open-ended. That's open-ended. That could get, that gives them the right, if they need to, to start billing, and I don't want, you know, I don't wanna be in that position.
If you look at Attachment A2 as well, there's the scope of services for Task 2.9, I just wanna draw your attention to that, as well as Task 2.10 with the detail for those two sections. Just drawing your attention to that. There's also a schedule, and then the compensation. Upon notice to proceed, prepared to begin work immediately, proposed perform above stated services for the lump sum fee breakdown indicated below, and includes labor and expenses, invoices submitted directly to the client on a monthly basis, construction phase services, 146,500, resident representative, that's the $93,000 for labor as an estimate, the total, 239,500.
And then I'd like to read, under compensation, for services performed under Task 2.10 of this agreement, the owner agrees to pay, key word, pay, the engineer, within 30 days of the invoice as charged accrued on an hourly rate basis.
Yeah, my, my understanding of that is that you have certain elements that are, you sort of know what the costs are gonna be, the contract administration, the onsite rep. They basically have an estimate, because they have different reps that may be performing different functions. There are different rates for those reps, that's why you see, you know, a different level of engineers that will handle certain tasks. So, when they come with that, when they put the number out there, that's the number they expect it to be. That's the estimate based on the expected mix of work, but the actual invoices that we would be paying within 30 days, those are the invoices for the work that is performed in that period, when it's done, by the level of engineer that's assigned to those tasks. Um, I don't see if we approve this, like we have in other documents, if we approve this, you know, authorizing up to 239,000 for those-
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
Okay. I don't see that, but we have a problem with doing that, and if that overruns, and I believe that's what the intent would be, they're basically saying for the, this next phase, Amendment Six, we are, uh, would be allocating up to 239,500. I believe the word estimated, and I know what you're saying about the word estimated, that's to have a firm fixed number. I actually probably would prefer not to have a firm fixed number, as long as we have controls on not going over, because depending on which engineers are used, that number may be less, you know? It could be, could they end up wanting more? Sure, but if we control the hours and, and are smart with how we use them, depending on the engineers that are being used, that number, it's, it's hard to know exactly what that number's going to be in fin, in finality.
And for the record, I'm fine with 4.1, leaving the word estimated duration of work. Now, that's fine. That word estimate could stay, but when it comes to the second part, so if you want to somehow say up to 239.5, or not to exceed, I'm fine.
Or just to say we're gonna allocate, as defined in this contract, at 239,500 for the scope of services work, that limits us at the 239.5.
And I, I think in all fairness, if they know where we're coming from upfront, there isn't gonna be an issue. If they know we don't have a comfort level with this additional compensation section, strike that, and we have a, we don't, we have a comfort level with estimate, they're gonna be fine. Then they know what their budget is, they know what, how to work, perform within their task. I mean, think about it, what if every category in this thing was an estimate? We'd be in big trouble. I know this is only one little category, and I don't wanna blow it out of proportion, but it's still an open door.
Well, it's not, it's not, and it's not a little category, it's a significant amount of money, and that's-
Well said, well said.
Okay, um, but again, I, I understand the use of estimate. I don't think it's used in a nefarious way. I think if we allocate the money as, to, to proceed with this at 239.5-
And that's what we're gonna pay regardless.
That's what we're gonna pay, and I, and I can also tell you, as we've proceeded with this, um, there's been, I'll say, pretty good scrutiny put on some of the, the bills that have come in as they're coming, um, that's how this park's gonna end up coming in at under 6 million, is, is the, there's, there's been definitely a level of scrutiny on these expenses.
Lou is next.
I just have a, a question. On the 239,000, is that in place of the 146.5 in 2.9?
No, that's, those two numbers added together.
Two numbers together, two different functions.
So, so now, the 2.9 is 239 plus 146?
No, no.
2.9 and 2.10.
Separate, separate.
Okay, so they added 93,000.
Yes.
Yes.
That's how they've been doing the contract all along, they've been amending it all along, and then we vote on the next pieces.
Cumulative.
But, just a, a question along with what, a little bit, Lou was getting at, I think, is, so you're saying, I think you're saying, Jim, it's okay to author them to 239.5, because they're not, that's gonna be hard and fit-
Right.
-fast, but what if the 93 really could've been 90 or 85, then couldn't the 230, wouldn't the 239 drop? But if they know that we've approved 239, that they're gonna just, you know, schmag the numbers till they get their 239 one way or the other.
I, I think that's why you have to trust it's somewhat of a best estimate, right? It could've also been 110. Um, it's hard to know. I think part of what we've been going by is, and we trust, you know, we have a, a chairman of the committee, that is, um, this is what he does for a living, um, he's familiar. I think when you look start to finish on this project, including the initial expenditures, um, including the initial expenditures associated with the, the concept work that was done, uh, which were also included as part of all these phases, the whole thing is coming up, uh, just over 10 percent. What is it, it's gonna be on a 6 million project?
Yeah, it's the-
It's like 10 or 11 percent of, of-
That's this 674 figure?
Yeah, it'd be like, so it'd be about, you know, six point, uh, just over 11 percent.
So, my suggestion, in the name of, sake of time here, construction phase services, they have a hard number of 146.5, we're not even discussing whether it's up to, we're just leaving it alone, but the second one, where they had the word estimate, we just cross out estimate, and in front of it, put up to 93,000. So, if it comes in lower, like you said, it comes in lower, and if it doesn't, and they burn through everything, they do, but they can't exceed it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can just, if we approve it with a, with a total expenditure of up to 239.5, what I'm saying, though, is if we say we're gonna strike the word in there-
That's not what it says in this contract. It says total of 239.5 plus, if you go back up to top to compensation, it says that we are agreeing, if we vote on this tonight, unamended, we're agreeing to pay them the 90 and the 105 an hour, depending on who the person is, period. There's no negotiating, not coming back in front of this board. They have that legal right. That's what that says.
You're only auth, I believe you're only authorizing the signature up to the 239.5.
It's not what, it, it, no.
It's right in the front page. The additional fee for these additional services is 239.5, which will be added.
Well, then why does this sentence, once again, for services performed-
Because I think it's an hourly age.
-under Task 2.10 of this agreement, the owner agrees to pay the engineer firm within 30 days of invoices and charges accrued on an hourly basis-
Right.
-at the following hourly rates. It is open-ended if we vote on this tonight the way it's written.
I, I don't necessarily agree if we say we're not gonna pay, 'cause they're gonna have to let us know if they're gonna go over that-
Fine.
93.
Correct, and then they have the legal right to-
And we can say, no, we want you to stop.
No, we do not have that right. We've already agreed to pay them for their services that go past that.
Not if they put a price- Not if they put a price in that says 239.5.
That, that has the word estimate in the quotations. They're covered.
In front, right. I guess I'm trying to look at amendment six and this wording.
Which one?
I don't see, the word estimate's not in that section when it's defining it. The 93,000 is in there, I see it as estimate.
Then why do we have all this 105 an hour and 93...
Because that's how they charge you get up to the 93.5. That's describing the mechanism by which that's...
So to save time, can we just strike estimate and put in up to 93.5?
I don't know what, striking a word out of the contract that's already been signed by one party, if it means it would have to be re-signed by that party.
Yes, yes, it would. They would have to agree to it, as amended. I will, I will have no problem voting on it as amended.
Well, it's up to the...
The full board, correct. I'm only one voice.
I mean, I don't actually think it makes based on the fact that the act, you know, the price that they're quoting on this, in the second paragraph is 239.5. It doesn't say estimate. That's what we'd be allocating. If it makes you feel better about taking the word estimated, which I believe is in there because of how the charges are actually accrued and tallied up over time, I don't have a problem, you know, as long as it doesn't really hold up, you know, where we're moving.
I'm not trying to hold up the project, I just, I'm nervous about that word, and maybe I'm dead wrong, so be it. But I don't believe I am, and I think it is going to be, or could become problematic. And if we agree to it as amended, and they still are okay with it, then that's how it I would personally like to strike the word estimate, and if you're more comfortable, and I'm fine with leaving the 93. I don't even need the up to. At least then I know a number, and I have a comfort level. I'm fine with that.
I prefer the up to.
That's fine.
If it goes smoothly, I'd rather not spend the 93.
Fine, that's, you're right. But I just, I wanna be clear, you know, they've been doing this a long time. I think they're a capable firm. I think they can create their numbers and have a comfort level, and I don't believe this is a deal killer, so I personally would like to close that.
Like I said, if it said, again, it's not worth arguing for too long about, I don't think it's materially gonna make a difference. I do look at the fact that we have a hard number that does not say estimate.
Yep, and I respect that.
That's in the second paragraph defining it. Again, I don't think the word estimated is in there for any nefarious purpose, other than to say, they don't know what the exact number's gonna be.
Okay.
Because of how the costs get accrued.
So then, get rid of the word estimate, put up to, and then we're all happy? I'm just giving my suggestion. I will have no problem making that amendment if you would like.
It's not me, yes, but...
Can I speak?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think the two, in the front page, the 239 is a solid one. I agree with, you know, in the sense that the estimated word in there later in the document does kinda say that it could change. Working with some of the other projects in town, I've noticed that the charges for engineering vary. And this one is probably the lowest compared to some of the other projects. And so I'm thinking that if, in fact, it's that estimated, you know, at whatever it's at, it's not gonna double or triple. So I'm kind of going with the fact that the 239 is, is exactly what it would cost, maybe a little more, but not 1%, 2%, or 3% more. So I think that this document, the way it is, serves us well.
Yeah, and I think it's important to say, same observation on some other projects that I've seen. I think the fact that we're right, just right around 11% from, again, from day one, when it was a conceptual process, that included having engineering coming out and educating the public and getting feedback and doing feasibility. And I think from the time we started in earnest, the phase that started in earnest for the final engineering and all of the work up until now, I think it's right around 7.4% of the bill budget. So it's been, it's relatively, and that's 7.4, I believe, is about right. So it hasn't been too bad. It's not a, it has not been a, the costs have been rational as compared to the overall budget, based on some other ones I've seen.
It says right here, the lump sum is for, for tasks between 2.1 and 2.9. It excludes 2.10, just like I said.
Where?
Bottom of the first page. The lump sum price is for 2.1 through 2.9 of this agreement.
It's because it's not a lump sum, it's on an hourly basis.
Right.
It's not a lump.
Oh, it's an estimated hourly basis which could exceed 93,000. Correct.
No, it's not a lump sum.
2.10 is not in the lump sum number, that's...
Yes, Ben, all right.
Okay, show me that, show me that I'm wrong. I do believe that the 2.10 could be billed hourly and exceed 93,000.
239.5, if you take 2.9 and you take 2.10, they equal 239.5.
No, 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 hang, okay.
What it's talking about is 2.9, everything up through 2.9 was charged as a lump sum.
For services performed under task 2.1 through 2.9 of this agreement, the owner agrees to pay the engineer the lump sum fee indicated in the following table.
Correct.
That's for not 2.10, do we agree?
Correct.
Okay.
Because 2.10 is not a lump sum.
Correct. It could be a number that changes. So we're all on the same page. So back to my point, the lump sum number, the last one, 2.10, is a variable. Says it right here, it's a variable. It could exceed that, I, so all the more reason I definitely, after reading this now a few more times, I would, I would like to amend, am I allowed to make an amended motion?
No, there's no motion made.
Can I make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to move the question and to approve the agreement with the service, the engineering services of Weston and Sampson.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Second motion. Now discussion.
Do we want to, when we approve it, approve it for this amendment up to the 239.5 as stated in the second paragraph?
Yes.
For up to the 239?
Up to the 239, to only allocate up to the 239.5 and clearly state that.
Yes, I think you should say that in the motion.
For, for task 2.9, for 2.10.
And 2.10 inclusive, that we put a cap on the approval of 239.5.
Why didn't we do that 10 minutes ago?
I said that 10 minutes, no, I said that 10 minutes ago.
Was that seconded? Oh, as amended, no, you made the motion.
We're in discussion, we're in discussion right now, but I think it was a friendly amendment.
Don't worry, they'll get it straight on us.
That the motion was made to approve amendment number six as written, comma, not to exceed $239,500. Is that correct?
For, for tasks 2.9 and 2.10 inclusive.
Yes, is that correct?
I will accept that friendly amendment.
Motion made, seconded by Jim. Further discussion.
I'm happy with the change.
Yes.
The motion to approve amendment number six, you said something after that, but I didn't understand. We're after number six, before not to exceed...
For additional engineering services.
Thank you.
And then what were the rest of the words, Sharon?
Not to exceed 239.5 for task 2.9 and 2.10 inclusive, yeah, seconded by Jim.
Is that clear?
Yeah.
Lou?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and clear, Jim? And any further discussion?
I think we should vote.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? The motion carries. Thank you for everyone's help. You do have a monthly budget report given to you this evening, and I have asked Tom Robinson to come to our July meeting, which we're only going to have one July meeting, I believe it is the 16th, if I'm not mistaken. Let me double check. Is that right? And at that time, we'll have some more in-depth discussion. At that point, he'll have a better handle on expenditures, won't have a total handle. But we are preparing for our offering statement for going out to bond, and we are also finishing up year-end matters, so I felt that it would be appropriate for July. And we can talk more about the school lunch matter at that time, if that's appropriate. Is that okay? So that's the only meeting that we'll have in July, dedicated to financial. But I do have the copies given to you, and certainly at any time, further discussion on that can occur. You can always ask Tom. There are a lot of tasks that he's been assigned recently, and he's been spending many, many hours, so I thought it was prudent to discuss this in more detail at our July meeting. And it gives you time to review this as well. And I do have appointments to boards and commissions. Do you, do you have to check?
That's, I know we have one, I'm trying to...
I do know that Martha Dumas, who is, is one for Inland Wetlands, she's an alternate right now. And the other would be Christopher Rulo for the, I don't know whether that's been actually made, I know that that was something considered. I think Martha may be the only one at this point that's been given to my office.
Okay.
The other, Mr. Rulo was considered for Veterans Affairs Commission, but he hasn't been formally given to the office by any town committee at this point, but discussions have been.
All right, so we've been moving, Martha, I know Martha.
Martha Dumas, D-U-M-A-S, is currently an alternate on Inland Wetlands, and there is a vacancy within the full board, so it's been asked that she be in her full seat.
All right, so I would nominate Martha Dumas to be moved from her seat as an alternate on Inland Wetlands Commission to a full, to a full seat.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lou. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Are there any other nominations tonight? Okay. Next is refunds of excess payments.
I'll make a motion that we refund, I guess, I can, I'll do them together, because they're the same, to Ally Financial, the sums of $224.74 and $441.34.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Status reports? Are there any status reports tonight?
I have one.
Sure.
The airline trail is open, and it was a wonderful ribbon-cutting ceremony. Many people, maybe 80 to 100 people, the board attendants, walkers, bikers, many people from the Board of Selectmen, Board of Education, town police, town residents, even Rick Shar was there the day before, Mike as well. So it's great that it's open, and it looks like, now that we're open, East Hampton is gonna have to move forward. And the engineer, who was also a consultant for ours, for Angler Engineering, is pushing them a little bit to see if they could get their quarter-mile done, so that people from Portland can bike, if they choose to, from Portland to Willimantic without biking on a road.
Is that close, a quarter mile? That's what separates us?
Is it about a quarter mile?
My kids play in a field, we have a field that abuts the airline trail, and they've been giving people directions. That's their new, they said a lot, a lot of people have been approaching them, saying, which way goes what, so they're...
There has been some gunshots in the area, and the police have investigated. But if you hear any shots, you need to contact the police so that we can get a handle on that.
There's a firing range on our association's property, which abuts that airline trail, which has been there long before the airline trail.
If you hear shots, people, contact us. Let us know, so we can check it out.
One of the, one of the homeowners on Middle Haddam Road has a target, he shoots his gun in his backyard, and he may have heard that. It's right near the trestle. I've heard him, because obviously I live sort of halfway between the two. Yeah. I've heard him coming from the two different directions. You hear some, and then you hear somebody coming from the back, so...
The police are looking into the rules associated with such occurrence, so they would appreciate any input that, that people have, if they hear it, so that they can investigate.
And Lou, I, yeah, I was there on Saturday because I never got the notice that it was changed.
Well, we did wanna have people...
So I tested it out, and it was, it was in good...
Riz appreciated the fact that you had done that, and made sure it was safe for everybody.
Okay, tell them thank you. It was a very nice event, so congratulations to all the folks that organized it. The trail looks, it looks great. It was successful enough that my neighbor, you know, commented, I hope this isn't gonna happen every weekend, and so many cars here, so it was very well done, so congrats to all.
And just one other point of information is that sometime within the next two or three board meetings, the Airline Trail Committee would like to recognize their committee members and as well as the Board of Selectmen. So if we could put that on the agenda in July...
Want that in July?
July or other.
Okay, July be good?
Yeah.
16, thank you.
I think the only other status report is that the Water and Sewer Subcommittee has met a couple of times. We did have, and wanna thank the, the Water and Sewer folks, Rick Kelsey, Mr. Shea showed up. It ended up being, we had four of the selectmen there, so it ended up being, it had been noticed as possibly a, a board meeting if that happened, so that's how the minutes were done. But we were able to take a very informative tour that, of the water facilities, the pump stations, the sewer, the treatment facility, which was, I think, very educational for everybody that went. So a thank you to the group. Gotta give kudos to the folks that are, that work at those facilities. As tough of an environment as it can be, when you went, we went in and looked at them, we can tell that there's age, but they were, you know, they were clean, they're well-maintained, and they're doing as well as they can do with what we've got for infrastructure, so...
Somebody in my house needs stitches, I need to go.
Oh, boy.
It's the most important one, mommy.
Oh, boy.
Picture didn't look good. See ya.
All right, hope everything's okay.
Oh, we forgot Dave.
We haven't forgotten him.
Nope, no, that'll be under informal discussion.
Oh, okay, I just wasn't sure.
Yep, thank you. Any other public comment tonight?
I have a question in relation to the gunshots. I know nothing about that part of town. That's like in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, you gotta come out our way sometime. You know, we're out in the country out there.
Yeah.
God's country.
Can't walk it, so can't go.
Yes, you can now.
Are there any farms?
Pardon?
Are there any farms in the area?
Well...
The reason I'm bringing it up, because you're talking about gunshots?
Yeah, there are, there's farms.
Okay. Because there's a farm that abuts Raisus Drive, and they use this contraption that sounds like a gun, I think it's an air gun, to scare the whatever, the birds or whatever that's eating them, so...
Yeah, surely, actually, thank you, that's a good point. And I know that at the town garage, it goes off, and you hear it across the way. It is a very different sound. That's a much larger of a boom to scare them. This is the pop, pop, pop of a, you can, you know... No, 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 I'm saying, thank you, that's actually a very good point. But it is, it is, in the particular case, a different sound.
Okay. And then I have one question in relation to water and sewer. What's going on on Main Street that they're marking out the places? There's, there's, they're marking out, it looks like where the service line goes from Main Street to the first house on Russell Avenue, and then the next two houses going towards the post office.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if it's, are they marking in the street?
Call Public Works, they'll be able to, they do the call before you dig.
Yeah, it's nothing that came up on our, on our tour.
Yeah, it wasn't on a Water and, we, Jim and I went to Water and Sewer.
It's my understanding, based upon what happened on the presidential election, that it's the town's responsibility to take care of the service lines on Main Street. You know, the, the project for sidewalks is also going to be getting started, so if you call Public Works, they'll be able to tell you the projects, surely, for the call before you dig, because they're responsible for calling that.
That's right.
Unless it's a private concern that's doing it, or the state, but typically, Public Works can give you that answer.
Because Rick had explained to me that the service lines are, he's sitting there, not Rick, but no, Rick had told me that the service lines, the other Rick, that the service... service lines are the responsibility of the town, not the state.
Only for the curb paths. They'll shut off the house.
Right, and then the house. See, I learned something, I've got something in my head.
Mr. Murphy?
Dave Murphy, 40 Carousel Drive, Board of Education, but speaking as a taxpayer. I'd make a couple of quick comments, and I already, we got a new Public Works director coming on board, and I'd already sent Susan an email that I think it'd be a good idea if we did like a meet and greet, kind of like understand what his...
And I agree.
...thing is going to be, because one thing that popped in my mind is that the Board of Education meetings, our superintendent has his administrators periodically come and give updates on what they're up to, and it's very informative, principles, technology, so maybe that we, I know we don't want to make this meeting any longer, but that maybe make it a little bit more interesting, have the, have the Police Department, the Public Works, or, you know, Finance come and just, hey, what's going on, what's the latest big thing going on, and then the part B was, is there any update on the brownstone property? Because we're coming up to 30 days into the 60.
Yep, I can give you an update. Friday, there will be a walk at the site with the both parties, so the engineer slash environmental folks, as well as the representatives from the two parties. I want to see where the pipe is. A proposal has been discussed by this board previously. I did bring it to the board, and they looked at it with an estimate of what kind of work would be needed to be done. So before any action is taken, it's prudent to go and look and see what they're doing. So that's Friday, and I would anticipate having a report back at our next meeting.
So you think maybe the next meeting, you'll have like an update on the agenda?
I hope so, yes.
Good, thanks.
David, now thanks for being patient. Okay, now we're in informal discussion, and questions came up during public comment about our website, David, and they, people stated that they looked for agendas and minutes and couldn't access them. Can you comment on that? If you can, I understand, but...
I think what happens is it goes down periodically. I sent an email last week.
You did too, David.
Then it worked, then occasionally catching was not working.
Okay, it's working now.
Yeah, we just put a new calendar module. One of the elephants in the room in relation to the website, the website, the current website that we have, we've updated our Dot Net Nuke, which is a content management software, to the latest version. Unfortunately, because of the size of our website, our Portland website is on three versions back, okay? So it's, if you look on your phone, it's not what we call a responsive website, so, you know, it can't be viewed well on tablets or phones, because it's not responsive, okay? So that's one of our issues that we have to, and we brought that up, that we want, we need to spend, spend a lot of time migrating up to the new platform. But the calendar module is running on the new platform, and a lot of times, that doesn't mesh with the old platform, as far as that goes. So why the agendas, I don't know. I did get, we did, I did get notification, there was a 404 error this week, and one of the services had stopped running on that old, on that old platform, so that's all I have.
Any other input for Dave all this year?
Last night I ran, and I got a 404 last night.
Yeah, yeah.
Paul Glenn said he, I think he was trying to bring the site up on his phone, because he held his phone up, so...
That's what I'm talking about.
Then he said he went and he got two computers, I don't know if he used them yet, but that he was going to try to access it from his computer.
Yeah, from the computer.
So you're saying from the computers, it...
Yeah, it should work.
Should work.
Okay, but on a phone, and that's what they recall, on the new updated platforms, the content management is responsive, to where it adjusts the size of the image to accommodate the size of what you're looking at it on, whether it's a phone, or tablet, or whatever, so, yeah.
But as Mr. Murphy said, sometimes it's fine, and there's not a problem, other times...
Yeah, and I think that's, that's the, kind of the issues with the newer upgraded platform versus the old credit platform. This summer, we have to totally move the old one, because the website is so expansive, it takes a lot of time, and it's basically money and time to move everything over onto the new platform, because you have to typically migrate all of that information archived and everything, okay, move it into the new platform, and then, you know, move it up onto the latest version.
Yeah, just so you know, I was actually able to pull it up, and it came up fine, like the PDF. If I went into accordion view, and then was able to see everything, I'd be able to get it.
Correct, correct.
So that worked well, at least right now. Question I did have, though, is in terms of overall responsiveness. Are we still feeding it with the, you know, getting it by the T1?
Yes, we are. And in fact, I had a meeting with Frontier today. They came back with a proposal to upgrade that T1, so I'm going to be going over that with Tom. So that's, you know, the issue.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Any other questions?
You're on it, right?
Try to keep the balls in the air. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, informal discussion, a couple of things. I have asked Bob Shea to have, have an open office hours on a Tuesday likely in July, once he's got his feet a little wetter than a couple of days, which he's been in, been in his office now about almost a week. And we can certainly have him also come to a meeting as well, as he will be doing. But I thought it'd be nice to have people come in and see him in the office as well, so we'll be announcing that, but we'll also have him coming to meetings, much as Rick typically did. But since he's new, he is looking at some, some new initiatives, and I think some very exciting things that I think people will be very pleased with, and he's doing a nice job so far, so thank you for the suggestion, David. I also want to point out that some of the public comment tonight, and other nights, when they revolve around legal matters, it is prudent by the selectmen, and by me as first selectman, to not make comment when there are legal matters pending. And the selectmen, and I have said this, and I want to repeat it, just as the Board of Education and other boards, we meet an executive session to go over legal matters, and that is appropriate and prudent, and we can do that at any time. And some of these issues, it is appropriate for the selectmen to review it. But we represent all 9,300 people in the town, and it's important that we listen to everyone who comes, and it's important that we represent everyone. And as far as giving you information, when it involves legal matters, and many things associated with towns and cities are legal matters. And some of these items that are being brought up, you are not aware of all the details, because you are not in the office on a day-to-day basis, but we are happy to make that available to you, and very appropriate to do so. So we can certainly make those arrangements. Important, I believe, and I believe in speaking with the selectmen, that we do operate the town in accordance with good protocol, and within the realms of prudent management, and following the laws and rules of our town. That involves listening to people's input, and it involves giving this board, as is your charge by the charter and by state statute, to review matters, particularly law and legal cases that come before the town in an executive session. I also wanted to point out that the Conservation Commission will be looking at the possibility of a one-year permit, permits are renewing for the reservoir, and we've had some requests over time for people to be able to fish at the reservoir, given the requirements for licensing and so forth. So our Parks and Recreation Commission and our Conservation Commission will be looking at that, in concert with the Department of Public Health. Our reservoir is a protected water source, and we are looking at whether or not it is appropriate to allow recreational fishing within the laws of the state. So that'll be discussed by the various boards.
Yeah, basically, according to the Department of Public Health, our reservoir is considered emergency water supply, and because it's considered an emergency water supply, there can only be passive recreation, as far as in relation to hiking around it, there cannot be any fishing, and not supposed to be, not that there isn't, but...
Well, and we have contacted Eric McPhee...
Yep.
...at the Public Health Department, so we're going through the renewal process. And again, it was, it was a comment, I just want to give it as an illustration, Dave, thanks for your input, that people have asked for it, so we're looking into it.
For now. Hopefully it won't go out.
Someone knocking at the door, or?
No.
Okay. Let me see if I had any other notes here. I don't think I did. Jim?
Yeah, just one, I just wanted to say, you know, great job by the Parade Committee for the Memorial Day Parade. It was challenging with the weather. It spoke very well, I thought, of our community, when you go up that street and you see it, and a lot, you know, very much lined by a lot of residents, on a day when the weather was, let's just say, less than perfect. It was a great event, and I know it was a lot of fun to walk in it, and it was just very well done, so.
Thank you, Jim, I agree. Committee did a fabulous job.
Yes, they did.
We're looking forward to next year. Did a great job. Anybody else?
Just one more thing. In the newspaper today, I see that the Portland High School golf team has won the state championship for the third time in a row.
Great job.
And, you know, the kids, the coaches, the school, the Board of Education should be very proud of all those kids. They all make us proud, and they did it in a very professional way, so congratulations to all of them.
Absolutely. Please convey that to the Board of Ed, Dave. Appreciate all the hard work that's done.
I'd like to add one more thing also.
Yes.
Speaking of congratulations, you just reminded me. The Portland Middle School Track Team had their best performance at the state middle school meet. The boys took third place in the state, which is by far the highest. They might have been able to win it, had there been a couple of other things that had changed, and the girls took ninth, so fantastic job. They were, they just did phenomenal this year, so.
I heard great things.
It was wonderful, yeah.
Yeah, it's also worth noting, especially because some of the things we've looked at, 78 kids came out.
Wow, really?
Seventy-eight kids, it's a two-grade school.
Wow.
Seventy-eight kids out of those two grades participated in the track program.
And not only that, is, we were one of the smallest schools at the state meet, and we performed that well, and the, and for those of you that are track and field people, the 4x100 is one of those premier meets, premier events, and our kids not only won it, but they also broke the state record.
Really?
By a second, 47.6 seconds, which is phenomenal, so they've been flying high since then.
That's great. Oh, they should be. That's a lot of hard work, and great coaching for these two.
Yeah, it's got to be that coaching.
Portland...
Coaches are important.
And it's worth noting, Portland girls came in second in the state in the 4x800.
Wow.
And they, I think the boys came in first in the 4x800, with a last leg lunge, it was very exciting to watch, so. It was a great meet, the kids did a fantastic job, and thanks to the coaches, Mr. Pelton, and Deb Ruth, and everyone else who's helped out, they did a fantastic job with the kids.
And Joe Sance, and Mary, for the boys golf, and of course, Athletic Director Sarah.
Yes, absolutely.
Two other things in terms of projects. We are going to have a groundbreaking for the Route 17 Park, and a groundbreaking for the sidewalk project, and the date tentative, is it established yet for the park?
Yeah, I don't know if it's, I think it's official, it was the 20th, right?
We're targeting 6/20. We want to make sure that it's, we want to make sure that it's going to happen.
Yeah.
Okay, so stay tuned on that date, and a tentative 27th of June for a very simple groundbreaking for those sidewalks. And the reason for these is to alert people that these projects are starting, because it does represent progress, and it also represents potential interruption in terms of service, especially for sidewalks or for other things. So it's important to keep apprised of that, and all are welcome at our June 11 meeting, which is Monday, where we are dedicating ourselves to looking at some of the needs for complete streets, which means everyone shares the road, not just cars, but also bicycles and pedestrians, and the attention that we all need to pay toward following the rules, particularly in terms of vehicle speeds on our roads. So all are welcome at that here in this room on the 11th, I believe it starts at 6:30, and it is, Captain Malardo will be there, myself, and Kathy Haron will be making a brief presentation on the concepts that we've previously adopted, and the policy that we have on complete streets. And I think that for now, we're up to date. Is there anything else to come under general discussion?
Okay.
I have nothing on follow-up at this point, but I would entertain a motion for a brief executive session on contract negotiations.
So moved.
Seconded by Mike.
Michael.
Thanks, Mike.
Quiet corner.
And with, with your permission, we'll take a brief recess. Jim?
Mike.
Go into contract negotiations. No guests, just the selectmen will be here.